Which one was that?
The kitten liked it.
I'm tired of typing them in.
Okay.
It is 5:50 PM, December 1st, 2025. I'll call this public meeting to order. City of Peru Common Council, Peru City Hall, Peru Indiana. We have a roll call, please.
Anderson?
Here.
Fisher?
Here.
Huber?
Here.
Murphy?
Here.
Saad Duchney?
Here.
Stevenson?
Here.
Ori?
Here.
Thank you. This public hearing is regarding additional appropriation, Resolution Number 20-2025. This will be discussion, explanation, questions, and we will have a vote on this resolution at our regular meeting at 6 o'clock. Do you have any questions? Andrea, would you like to explain these additional appropriations?
The first one is for the Community Crossing Grant. We did not use all of our funds from the grant, therefore, we had to refund the remaining balance back to NDOT. The second one is the Streets and Sanitation Non-Reverting Fund for $200. That was a return check for rental of a dump truck, which left that account in a negative. The next one is for the Animal Control Donations Fund. There was $340 spent out of that for a vet visit. And then there's the Unsafe Building Non-Reverting Fund, $75,000 to be appropriated for possibly spending on the recycle center cleanup. And then the last one is the Cumulative Capital Development Fund for $75,000. That was for a new pump that was installed for the irrigation system at the golf course.
I have a question. On the pump, now, why was that not part of the original cost of the irrigation system? Or?
That was not.
It was not. After the system was designed and was in the process of installation, the decision was made to upgrade to the bigger pump set. It would be like building a race car with maybe a very small engine. So, the additional monies was spent to put the proper-sized pump in that irrigation system so we could maximize the irrigation system.
Okay, thank you.
What is the one for the unsafe building with the recycle center? What exactly is that?
The recycle center behind Hardee's. As you know, the business, the owner passed away. There was a lot of material that was left in that building. We considered a very unsafe situation. In fact, if it would happen to catch fire, it'd be catastrophic for the city. So, we've decided to go ahead and use some funds from the Unsafe Building Fund to clean that up, get that material out of there. And then, we can begin the process of deciding legally who is responsible for that and go after them for recovering that cost. But, it's a situation, it's a very unsafe situation, and we feel like we need to work on it now rather than later. So, we do have money in the Unsafe Building Fund to do that, so we want to allocate monies for that cleanup.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, were they going to reopen that? Is there any chance to reopen that or not?
I don't believe so, no.
Were their trusses and stuff broken, that, like structural?
Correct, yes.
And we're trying to find out about ownership of that building and so on. And, yeah, that's what made the materials in there. A lot of the materials unrecyclable because of the water that's gotten in there and done that, so.
So, unfortunately, it just kind of turns into a landfill issue. We just have to load this material up and take it to a landfill, unfortunately. Do you have a comment?
Yeah, I was going to expand on what Mr. Fisher said. So, the city has liens filed against that property currently for unsafe building. That estate is defunct and essentially, per form representative, has off their hands of it. Let me go to the wayside. So, that property was up for tax sale in the fall. It did not sell. County, the city has notified the county that we will take the commissioner's certificate for that to acquire that. That way, we can satisfy those liens.
Probably nobody wanted to buy it because of the materials that were in it.
Than the amount of the lien. Because it's not, we, we're not the only entity that has liens against it, but ours would be superior to the others.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions about Resolution 20-2025? If not, we will bring this up at the regular meeting at 6 o'clock, and I would ask for a motion to adjourn this public hearing.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned. We will reconvene at 6 PM.
No. We're going to skip this over. Yeah. Dixon Shutter. Dixon comes all the way from Indianapolis. Well, the north side of Indianapolis. Yeah.
It is 6 PM, December 1st, 2025. I'll call this regular meeting to order in the City of Peru Common Council and the Peru City Hall Council Chambers. Please stand with me and then follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Brent Wedding.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, where our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we thank you for your many blessings. We thank you, Lord, for your mercy upon us. We pray that you would bless this meeting tonight. I pray for our mayor, our attorney, our city council, our clerk. I just pray for all of the city employees, our police and fire department, for our street department, as they're out working to keep our streets clean and safe to drive upon. We pray to bless them during this time. We pray, Lord, that your will and your wisdom would be accomplished in this meeting for the benefit of this city, and we give you thanks in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Here.
Fisher?
Here.
Huber?
Here.
Murphy?
Here.
Saad Duchney?
Yeah, here.
Stevenson?
Here.
Ori?
Here.
First order of business is the reading and correction of the minutes from our regular meeting on November 3rd.
I make the motion that we suspend the rules and approve the minutes as written.
Second. Roll call.
Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Saad Duchney?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ori?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
We'll move to the Committee Liaison Reports. Councilman Anderson?
For the fire department, we had a total of, for November, 107 runs, 11 fire, 71 medical assists, 18 calls of service, seven detector calls, 50 hours of inspection, and 85 hours of training. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Fisher?
Attended the November 4th and 18th Board of Public Works Meeting to, you know, they do approval of payment of claims and accepted bids on properties for demolition and so on, street closures. Attended the Peru Utility Board Meetings on the 5th and 19th to hear discussions about the long-term control plan and power outages, et cetera. Went to the Miami County Economic Developments Elected Officials Meeting on November 10th. That's just to discuss current projects and the status of existing projects. Went to the Miami County Recycling District Meeting on November 17th to discuss, you know, any account issues or customer problems and so on. Didn't have any meetings for the incentive review or the Miami County 9/11 dispatch or the Committee on Wage Negotiation. You know, other meetings I attended was the Miami County Commissioners Meeting on the 2nd, 17th, and this morning, and attended the City Board of Zoning Appeals on the 25th.
Is that all?
That's all.
Okay, thank you. It's quite a bit, appreciate it. Councilman Huber?
Talked to Kelly out at the airport today. Nothing really new happening out there. They had a, I think we, I talked about it last month, but they had the trip that they went to Kalamazoo. That was successful. So, for right now, there's really nothing going on to report. Street Department, however, they got a little bit busy over the last couple of days. The new dump trucks, Brian says they're working out pretty nicely. I saw them on the road. So, that's working well. The second pickup of the leaves is slightly under the weather, I guess, and they're going to do it, but there will be a delay because of the snow. I talked to Greg at the Animal Control. In November, they had nine dogs that were either spayed or neutered through the spay and neuter program, which is good. They're doing that again in January. They did put a new gate opener, power gate opener up there so that when the police department or anyone goes to use the gate, they can just hit a code and get in without having to get out and do a padlock, and plus, it will hold the gate open. If you've ever been up there, a lot of times, that gate works its way closed. So, four adoptions in November, three dogs in the shelter right now, and then one dog is in a foster home right now, and that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Councilman Murphy?
The Parks Board met on the 13th of November. The golf course is now operating only as weather permitting. They are working on the 2026 membership and sponsorships. The Alzheimer's Pickleball Tournament is moving forward, and we discussed impact on melanoma, which could lead to us having some free sunscreen dispensers at the splash pad and other potential parks.
Great, thank you. Councilman Saad Duchney?
I attended the Miami County Historical Society on November 12th. They had a total of 1,157 visitors. They brought in $350 for October, $93 from the gift shop. They brought in $1,200 in membership fees. They're also looking for new members. If you're interested, they meet every second Wednesday at 5:30 at the court, at the Miami County Museum.
I have a quick question, Pete. So, is that actually, is there a historical society or is this just the museum board? Is there really a historical?
Yes, there is a society. It was enacted for several years, but they've, it's, they fired it up.
Okay.
And so, Beverly Parker is the new director.
Okay, thank you.
So, they meet every second Wednesday, 5:30. And then, I also, like Tim, attended the Public Works, Board of Public Works Meetings on the 4th and the 18th. The Board approved a recommendation by Chief Dane to promote Richard Ashley to the position of investigator. Also approved the recommendation to hire Cody Dyer as probationary firefighter. And also approved the resignation of Lane Pierce of the Police Department. I attended the Miami County Council on November 18th. Just wanted to mention the transfers from personal funds, the Highway Department, the personal funds to supplies at $25,000. Also, a transfer of capital assets to supplies at $75,000, and one more to supplies for $24,750. And additional appropriations for the health insurance was $900,000. Those are mainly for claims. Okay, and that's all I have for that. And then, just wanted to mention briefly, the Civic Center will be having an open house this Sunday from 2:00 to 4:00. And Erica can probably fill in some more details. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Councilman Stevenson?
I have nothing to report.
Councilman Ori?
Okay, the Plan Commission, Cable Board, Incentive Review Committee, and also the Civic Center, none of those met. However, like Pete said, the Civic Center Christmas Open House is this weekend. There'll be tours, and to get some more bookings, they know that December was booking up, which is great, so. Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you. Appreciate all the Committee Liaison Reports. It's nice to see everybody so active in their committees and reporting back to the folks of Peru and what's going on.
Mayor, could I add just one?
Yes, sir.
This is from a personal friend of mine, wanted me to thank the street department for their fine work during the seasonal changes and like, well, we've had to deal with the last couple of days.
Thank you.
I had the same thing today as well.
Yeah.
Very proud of him.
Thank you. We'll move to the next item on our agenda, that is the swearing-in of probationary firefighter Cody Dyer to the Peru Fire Department.
Yes, good evening. Come to you all tonight. The Peru Fire Department would like to welcome our latest probationary firefighter, Cody Dyer. Cody is a graduate of McConacaw High School and attended Ivy Tech and resides in southern Miami County with his wife Haley and daughters Brynlee and Kennedy. Cody currently holds a firefighter 1 and 2 certification and will be starting his EMT class soon. Holding the Bible for his swearing-in will be his daughter Kennedy, and his daughter Brynlee will pin his probationary badge. So, they would come forward now.
We welcome Cody to the City of Peru. Thank you. Congratulations, firefighter Dyer.
Thank you.
Welcome to PFT.
Thank you.
Moving into old business, the first item under old business is additional appropriation Resolution Number 20-2025. Do we have a motion to consider?
Make a motion, we consider Resolution 2025.
Second. Roll call.
Huber?
Here.
Murphy?
Yes.
Saad Duchney?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ori?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion regarding Resolution Number 2025, additional appropriation? If not, I would ask for a motion to adopt?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 20-2025.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Murphy?
Yes.
Saad Duchney?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ori?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Thank you. Nothing further under old business, we will move to new business. First item under our new business is to nominate appointment to the Utility Service Board. We have a current member, his term is expiring, so we have three interested, two interested candidates plus the existing candidate. Candidates interested are Zachary Wright, Tom Lennon Senior, and Dave Van Valen.
What I'm going to do is just ask who's in favor for the appointment, and then you just say yes or no, as I do roll call.
And I'll be abstaining from the vote.
For all vote?
Yes.
Okay. Who's in favor of appointing Zachary Wright to the Utility Service Board? Huber?
No.
Murphy?
No.
Saad Duchney?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ori? Anderson?
No.
Fisher?
Yes.
Who is in favor of appointing Tom Lennon Senior to the Utility Service Board? Murphy?
No.
Saad Duchney?
No.
Stevenson?
No.
Ori? Anderson?
No.
Fisher?
No.
Huber?
Yes.
Who is in favor of reappointing Dave Van Valen to the Utility Service Board? Saad Duchney?
No.
Stevenson?
No.
Ori? Anderson?
Yes.
Fisher?
No.
Huber?
No.
Murphy?
Yes.
I show that we have three votes for Zachary Wright, two votes for Dave Van Valen, one vote for Tom Lennon Senior. So, we would, the council, it appears, will be appointing Zachary Wright to the Peru Utility Service Board effective January 1, 2026. Correct?
And I'd like to thank Zach.
Pardon me?
I'd like to thank Zach for, you know, wanting to serve.
Thank you for the appointment, I appreciate it.
Thank you, and we will be in contact with you for any swearing-in that needs to take place.
Thank you.
Thank you for your willingness to serve.
And thank you, Tom.
Yes, to all the candidates.
I thank anybody that's willing to step up and try to serve in any capacity of the city because you can talk to many people, and many people will just say no.
Absolutely.
So, we appreciate it.
Agreed. Next item under new business is Resolution 21-2025, a resolution establishing rate-tracking factor for the municipal electric utility of the City of Peru, Indiana. We have a motion to consider Resolution 21-2025.
I make the motion, we consider Resolution 21-2025.
Second. Roll call.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ori?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Saad Duchney?
Yes.
Good evening. So, this is the quarterly tracker, this is the pass-through cost for energy, this isn't revenue for operations, it directly reimburses our energy costs that we do every quarter. This particular one will be an increase based on energy costs increasing and purchase power costs, so it ends up being just over what it was Jan, or December of 2024, so we're finally back positive on the base rates, where we've been negative on the base rates almost the entire year, so. That puts, Peru's current rate is, for 1,000 kilowatts, is, and the customer charge is 1,2818, and that puts us to 1,3397. And in comparison, Duke is 1,6863, 25% higher. Heartland RMC, Wabash, in the Wabash area, is 1,5158, 13% higher. Miami Cast RMC is 1,6647, 24% higher. NIPSCO is 2,2784, 70% higher. AES Indiana, which is Indianapolis, in that area, is 1,5194, 13% higher than preutilities. So, even though it is an increase... So even though it is an increase, we're still significantly lower than most all of those that touch our system. Any questions?
Any questions about this? Then I would ask for a motion to adopt resolution 21-2025.
I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution 21-2025.
Second. And roll call.
Ori?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Cy Duchney?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item under new business is Peru Utilities requesting the approval of their sewer ordinance updates as part of the renewal of the Peru wastewater plant through IDEM, the review and bring the ordinance up to IDEM standards. This is ordinance 26-2025. Do we have a motion to consider?
Can I make a motion, we consider ordinance 26-2025?
Second.
And roll call, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Cy Duchney?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ori?
Yes.
Thanks again. So all this is, is part of our pretreatment program required by IDEM, when every so often we have to renew our wastewater plant permit through them, and this is part of that review. And during that review, IDEM suggested language changes to fit what they wanted to say, so you were given a copy of the proposed ordinance changes that were highlighted, and then a copy of the current ordinance, just those pages that had changes on them. I could go through every one if you'd like me to, but it just, it's wording, there were, I believe, seven or eight of them. I could do it quickly if you'd like me to, but it's, they're pretty simple language changes that don't really, doesn't change anything, just gives us the ability to have a little more oversight and a little more bite when it comes to discharge from industrial and commercial, if they're doing something that may harm the system. And if something like that happens, then it just doesn't harm the industrial base, it harms the residential base as well because we have to pay for it and clean it up if we don't have any teeth, so to speak, to make them either pay for it or correct it, so. And again, this is IDEM languages, it's something we just went in and said we need to change this. Any questions I can answer? Thank you. Simple enough.
There's a lot of pages there if you want to go through all that. So ordinance 26-2025 is an ordinance to amend ordinance 10-2006, which amends ordinance 25-2000, making these changes. Do we have a motion to adopt ordinance 26-2025?
I make a motion, we adopt ordinance 21-2025.
26.
26?
26, 2025.
Oh, 26.
26. Second.
Roll call, please.
Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Cy Duchney?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ori?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Last item on new business on the agenda is to review and approve project agreement for Two North Broadway Development, First Farmers Bank and Trust. Mr. Titt?
Thank you for the opportunity to present an exciting opportunity in the development agreement for your consideration tonight. This basically deals with the property at Two North Broadway, commonly known as the former First Farmers Bank and Trust. To kind of go back a little bit in time, Makita, with the approval of the city, in coordination with the city and the key building rehab subcommittee, purchased the building back on August 14th of 2024. After purchase and with consent of the key building committee, we advertised for requests for proposals on both September 12th and September 19th of 2024, looking for developers that wanted to partner with the city under the key building program to restore and rehabilitate that building. We received two offers, the key building committee unanimously accepted, an offer from Gilbert Properties Development LLC. Since that time, we have been working with Jeremy Gilbert, is the owner of Gilbert Development Properties, on a development agreement that would restore and rehab that building to accommodate 15 market rate apartments within the downtown, a destination restaurant on the first floor, excuse me, the apartments would be on the second and third floor, downtown destination restaurant on the first floor, and then also some other commercial space on the first floor. So I am happy to present this agreement tonight for your consideration. It is a three-party agreement, the parties involved are the city of Peru, which would be providing the funding assistance, or providing some funding assistance via the local match for both the Ready and the Lilly Endowment Initiative money grants that are coming from the state. The actual developer, in this case Jeremy Gilbert, but it's a separate LLC, Two Broadway Lofts LLC, and then also Makita, as we are the owner, current owner of the building, and we would be the grant recipient for the Ready funds and the LEI Lilly Endowment Funds. The total project amount to do the restoration rehabilitation is $3,797,348. The funding sources that we have put together to meet that project budget, we were successful in receiving a grant from the IEDC Ready Program of 625,000. We are also successful in getting a grant from the Lilly Endowment Fund for blight elimination in the amount of 625,000. Gilbert Development LLC is contributing $1,047,398. Redevelopment tax credits, we believe will generate about $795,600 towards the project, and then the city of Peru of 700,000 from its ceded fund that would act as local match for the 1.25 million of Ready and LEI funds put together. I would mention that you, in your 2026 budget, had allocated 1.25 million out of ceded funds to act as local match for a project that we had initially tagged for this money, and that was to do some more road improvements around the new YMCA. But this project came up, and I think the consensus of everybody involved is this project offers a higher priority with especially downtown apartments, which has totally been part of every plan that I've ever been associated with in my career here, as far as the city's goal, to have apartments in the downtown, as well as a destination type of restaurant and reuse of that building. So some highlights from the development agreement that I'd want to cover, the amount of the city's contribution and the key's contribution is capped in the agreement, so if there is any additional expenses beyond that 1.25 million of LEI and Ready, and also the 700,000 by the city, that's totally on the developer, any additional cost. The building will be held in escrow, we hope, working with financial institution, the developer has until the completion of the project. The city's funds, protective city's funds, and also the grant funds, so these funds will not be awarded directly to the developer. What will happen is those funds will be retained by Makita and by the city and paid out through monthly invoices for work that has already been performed. So that work will be itemized in an invoice, sent to either the Economic Development Authority or the clerk treasurer for processing. There are certain line items that are identified on the exhibit C in the developer agreement that will pay for those particular line items, that will come from those funds. So these funds are not being provided in lump sum to the developer, but paid out through invoices. The city, as well as Makita, can inspect the work at any time to verify that that work has been completed. The agreement also establishes a minimum assessed value of 1.5 million dollars, that begins at year three after the transfer, or after completion of the project. So those, if you remember, you also established a separate allocation area for TIF, a meeting or so ago, you approved that, so those TIF funds will be captured based on that 1.5 million of minimum assessed value, and those funds then will be split at a 90/10 between the city getting 10%, oh, excuse me, mayor, I'm sorry, the city getting 90% and Makita getting 10%, those taxes paid over the period of the TIF. At this time, what I would ask is for the council's approval of the development agreement. There are some definitions and some items that still have to be somewhat negotiated language between their legal counsel and our legal counsel for the city and Dustin, so I'd ask for the council to approve the development agreement, authorize the mayor to execute the development agreement, subject to final review by Dustin, our legal counsel. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Jim, do you know how many jobs the restaurant is going to provide?
I would assume probably 15 to 20.
Okay, and is Jeremy gonna have like property manager or anything like that for the apartments?
I would assume he will.
Okay.
Yeah, there will have to be someone that will have to take care of, or he will contract that out, like the parking lots, maintaining the parking lots, plowing, so doing all those kind of things or improvements inside. It'll be basically market rate apartments, but it'll be maintenance-free kind of, so it'll have to be a maintenance staff, employees at the restaurant. There is also a section of the building on the first floor that will be for professional offices, so hopefully offices for accountants, attorneys, those kind of things that will also create jobs.
Point of clarification, he's not developing the restaurant himself.
Right, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you. There is a couple of young folks, professionals, that are involved in the restaurant. Matter of fact, the other part of the investment that's not included in those numbers that I just spoke of is $500,000 is being invested by the restaurant owner.
What is the duration of this job?
Duration of this job?
From, yeah, once this goes to get the approval and everything?
Yeah, they're estimating seven months.
Seven months to completely finish all the apartments, the restaurant, parking?
Yeah, he has a crew with his development company with, I can't think of the name of the architectural firm, but this firm has contractors that do apartment complexes that are over at Purdue and everywhere, so they have a whole team that's gonna be working on this project.
Thank you.
And I want to share with the public that all the council members, I think, no, all but Steve have gone through that building some twice to see the, you know, what is existing and to get this information, and, you know, we're pretty excited about the project, and I know it's on a short turnaround with start probably going to be around mid-January, but we're hopeful that it's gonna bring some good things to downtown Peru, so.
Yeah, like I said again, especially with the downtown apartments, and I think this is the first of several other buildings to start developing apartments in the downtown, which again is part of every revitalization plan for the city that I've been a part of.
It's a great step forward.
Hopefully that's gonna drive more activity in the evenings in town, more retail, all those kind of things that we're all trying to work towards. The other thing to point out, going back to the budget, you put the 1.25 million in the budget, of course you can see we're only asking for 700,000, so it's way under what you had allocated for a Ready local match. Any other questions?
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions, comments, discussion regarding this, then I would ask the council for a motion to approve the development agreement and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement subject to final legal review.
I make a motion to approve.
Approve the development agreement.
Yeah, the development agreement.
And authorize the mayor.
And authorize the mayor to sign.
To sign the agreement subject to final legal review.
To sign the agreement subject to final legal review.
Thank you.
Second. I was gonna say, and I second whatever they said.
And we have a roll call, please.
Murphy?
Yes.
Cy Duchney?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ori?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
I think that's an amazing step toward revitalizing our downtown. Moving to communications, do we have any communication from the council?
Just once again, I'd like to thank the street department for how our roads look, it's amazing, and I, people all the time are talking about how great of a job they're doing, so I just wanted to give them a...
Thank you, make sure we pass that along. Any communication from the audience?
Mayor, we'd like to add one thing, the name of the restaurant will be Monacles, so...
Monacles Restaurant. Nothing further under communications, we move to adjournment, I need a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second. Thank you, this meeting's adjourned.